And work session to order.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilsons.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Reese. Here. Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Six members present. You have a quorum, your honor.
Okay, we're gonna get creative on the order tonight because of overtime and staff that's present. The first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do item number four first, presentation and discussion. No, we're gonna do item number three first, presentation and discussion on hospital agreement with Scottsdale and paramedics.
Good evening, your honor. Counsel, staff, I'm gonna bring you four. I have previously tendered a packet or information in your packets, which kind of lays out the nuts and bolts in regards to this proposal for this evening. But what I'd like to do is introduce and they'll come up, or at least Tracy Morano from Honor Health will come up and just give a real brief overview of the services that the base hospital or the hospital would be giving us, should you approve the agreement between the city and Honor Healthcare. Detective Chad Southwick is the officer that has gone through the initial training to become a tactical paramedic for the city and for the police department. And this was brought about actually several years ago when we were reached to a situation where there was a discussion between fire and the city and the police department in regards to staffing and paying, that is not my phone going off. Staffing for tactical and SWAT operations. We saw a need to have.
We need a code of conduct or something.
We saw a need to.
Turn it off. See, it's not turning off. How weird.
Sorry.
I was all Tracy.
Anyway, we saw a need to have staff professionally trained. So in case of an emergency that our officers would be able to receive the necessary training, services that the medical profession would have. This allows us to maintain, if you would look at the certification as we have in Arizona, the AZ Post Police Officer Certification, the paramedic also needs to have a certification board and they have to have a hospital sponsor them and Honor Health has agreed to sponsor our officer for the certification. Honor Health also certifies the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office as well as DPS in regards to tactical paramedic situation. So anyway, that was the reason we looked into it. Detective Southwick has received the paramedic training. He is currently not only certified here in Arizona but also nationally. And with this, it's basically a no cost to the city. Honor Health is doing this as a method to certify our officer, maintain the certification and maintain the necessary national training that he would need to keep his certification. If for some time that the officer would fail to perform at the level that the hospital had to set the standards at, his certification would be removed and then we would come back and talk to you about it.
Was there a great expense to do this?
It was, the only expense actually was paid out of the police department for the officer's salary, but he actually did the training on his own time.
So why stop at one? I mean, in the future, couldn't we keep going with others as well?
Well, the hopes was that we had one trained up in case of the emergency that should arise and for the SWAT operation. But Detective Southwick is planning for the future where we might have another one picked up in training. There is initial cost for the training and it is quite pricey to get a person certified. Detective Southwick had come from Michigan State, Michigan where he held certification as a paramedic there when he was with the sheriff's office. So it was a matter of upgrading and updating his previous paramedic training. So we saved a little bit of money in that. He just went through the additional classes and training to recertify himself. So without further ado, unless you have any questions for me.
So do we have to maintain a certain level of equipment and supplies and such?
There's a little bit of equipment that we would have for his emergency bag, but between what we could take out of our normal cadre of costs, we've talked to the fire district and they're gonna be able to assist in some manners. And I think Tracy could probably talk about some of any of those things that the hospital maybe will help us along with. Can I have Tracy come up? This is the first time that Tracy and I have actually met, so. I did Morano, but it's Marino.
Maroni.
Maroni.
Good evening.
I was close, like Peroni.
Maloney baloney.
Exactly. Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm very pleased to be working with Detective Chadwick. We've talked quite a bit on the telephone. He is familiar with our medical director, Dr. Daniel Stites, who is medical director for a lot of our SWAT operations within the Honor Health for DPS, MCSO. Now hopefully Detective Southwick. So what we do is we support the certifications from the Arizona Department of Health Services in the Bureau of EMS and with National Registry. So Detective Chadwick, in order to keep his certifications, needs to have a medical director or medical control. And with that, we look at his continuing education credits and skills level and we would mark him demable to continue with his certifications both nationally and in Arizona. We offer him continuing education. We have classes. He's welcome to come into our emergency rooms and to our operating rooms to practice his skills as needed. And because he would be based with us, he then does have medical direction and medical control, meaning that as a paramedic, he must have a physician that okay's protocols that he can use for any treatment or medications. So I'm hoping that you'll pass this through for us. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. So what you're saying is that the controlling physician would be at Honor Health in Scottsdale regardless of where the paramedic was?
Correct. So Dr. Stites is one of the physicians who's a base hospital physician at John C. Lincoln, which is an Honor Health Scottsdale hospital. So with Officer Chadwick, if he needed any protocols that he needed to ensure that he was following or any questions, he could call Dr. Stites or anybody actually that is in our emergency room physician. But her overseeing him is Dr. Stites.
Thank you.
Okay, is that everything then, chief? All right.
This will be before you tomorrow for consent.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to do, because this is why most of staff is here, for presentation number four, presentation and discussion with mayor and council on fiscal year budget classification and compensation.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, your honor. It's good to be here tonight. Go over the budget. I'm gonna ask Donna and Anna to come up as we go over this presentation. As they come up, I just wanted to make you all aware that this is a huge staff effort that takes place over several months. And you have in your audience your staff here to answer questions as you wish. And I thank all of them for their effort and their work to help work with us as we outline major themes that come from the mission and vision and also our goals and objectives for this fiscal year. I want to thank also Anna and Donna and Matt, Connie, who are part of the team as they've put final preparations together for the budget that we'll see tonight. So here we go. Highlights of the current fiscal year that we're in. We are so proud of our civic events. We have some wonderful cultural and visual events that help showcase the best of Apache Junction.
Can I interrupt?
These are two that are familiar to us. What's that?
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Go back to that picture.
Let's see. Oops.
Al, when working the Dutchman days, they don't want any pictures of snow out here because that hurts. When people come out here in the middle of winter, they want to see sunshine. They don't want to see snow, so.
Believe it or not, that was actually a discussion we had about that particular picture. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I for one will really appreciate one of the, on that day in particular, if it never snows again on that weekend, it would be okay. We were slammed with so many people that came out here to see. See, it's a good problem to have, but on that week.
We had 30,000 extra people.
So many came up at 88 and wondered what was going on. It was really neat. So some of the newer ones that we've had in existing community events include the Superstition Blues and Brews as well as Earth Day and the Ladybug Release. The road maintenance and repairs from current fiscal year continue on Idaho Road, Lost Dutchman to McKellups. We're very thankful that we have that revenue stream to help support our road efforts and our road maintenance. This last week, I had an opportunity to interview one of our employees who'd worked with us for well over 15 years from Public Works. And he caused me to think a little bit more about this division, the streets division. So within Public Works, we have fleet, we have facilities, and we also have the streets. And one of the things that I want to make sure the public knows and that we all remember, just the revenue stream related to streets has changed so much. And one of the major things I like to show is that even over a 12-year period, you know, we went from 7.2 all the way down to 3.69, now we're back up to 5.1, which is still $2 million less than where we were fiscal year six and seven. So sometimes we talk about the lost decade. Now we're going into the lost 12 years. And so what I asked him was like, so what does that impact? So when we, when I, when we go out and see the crew, we notice that it's not as many of them, first of all, and they're not able to do as much, including crack sealing, street sweeping, street maintenance, alleys and street striping. And it just, one of those opportunities that if you can just let our mayor and council know, this is from one of our employees and also our public, that they're doing the best they can, but there, where there was 7.2 million, 3.69, we still are back at the 5.2 million. So it's just a good reminder of where the revenue and where the revenue's at in order to carry out the services that we have or what we're accustomed to. So over the last couple of years, we've had great investments in the Superstition Shadows Aquatic Center. The plaster was a little overdue for 10-year update. Rusting was occurring and some of the structural rebar was starting to show. And another year would have caused safety concerns, so we thank you for your support and investment in the plaster. We addressed the last of the 88 transition plans. We replaced all fixtures and railings, et cetera, that were looking old and crummy due to calcium and hard water deposits. We've updated with LED lighting out there. And because it came in under budget, we were able to repaint all the water features that are out there. So if you have a chance to go out and see the aquatic center, I encourage you to do so. It looks, to me, it looked new. I got a chance to go down the red slide on Saturday and it was really awesome. So if you want to go do that too, we'll figure out a time. Our GIS division is a super highlight for us over the years as we try to educate and we work with developers, as we work with our public, the ability to have up-to-date maps and give super huge kudos to that team of two people. And they are doing some great work. We're working in conjunction like never before with SRP, with the fire district, with the sewer district and our water district, of course. This last year, we saw updates to downtown, visual improvements. And in this fiscal year, later in this fiscal year, we're looking at the first phase of the Apache Trail median landscape project. The court crew continues to do tremendous work. To me, this is a huge win-win-win within our community to have the ability to do some much-needed and landscape work in our public areas as well as San Marcos Crossing. This is the photo of before and after. This year, we were able to host two household hazardous waste events, which has been a goal for us to bring back for some time. And we'll talk a little bit about the next fiscal year with those that we have. So looking into the next fiscal year, we are anticipating that the national GDP will be at 2.5%, which is down from 2.9%. So somewhat steady, but not as, maybe quite as strong as we are feeling this current year. State estimate revenue growth is 7.7%, which was strong. And city's budget estimate is at 7%, which will derive about $1.9 million in net new revenue for the city. Included in the fiscal year proposed budget are mandated costs related to the public safety retirement personnel system as well as Arizona State Retirement System. Included in the budget is a 2.5% increase to all career status employees. Police Department Dispatch Center remodel. Continue to have the second household hazardous waste event. And we have in the proposed budget this year, three full-time positions, a police sergeant investigations, plan examiner and planning manager. Understanding that as we prepare for growth in the coming years, that we need to start preparing that department for future efforts.
Bryant, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So can, what, what will those two, the planning examiner and the planning manager, do that we don't already have in that department?
They bring capacity and the ability to do more plans. They'll be able to provide as the growth comes. So the positions really probably wouldn't start, I don't know if we have them for half a year, Matt, or a full.
I think it's a full year.
A full year. So they would, we would probably start the recruitment usually in July and probably start around October. But they can be able to take on as growth comes. We already are feeling it. We have already about 700 homes that are going through the entitlement process. We have, I wouldn't say huge impact, but Larry can talk to this a little bit if you'd like, just an increase in demand for that department even as we speak. And so.
Aren't these positions that got laid off during the downturn?
Yes. So when the downturn came, we, that department was the one that had less demand for services and less demand for needs. So those were the ones that had positions lost.
Are they considered administrative positions?
So the, the plans examiner, actually the planning manager, maybe Matt can explain this better, but the plans examiner is definitely not. The planning manager we see as a promotion and it'll actually be a net new planner in the department. Is that how we best describe it? Yeah, Larry can.
I'm just curious. I'd like to know a little bit more about it. It's not something we've seen for a while, like there was.
We have, yeah, we haven't.
Right. When the reduction in force happened, we did have a planning manager. That position was eliminated. Our plan is to, Rudy, who's been here 30 years, he would be the planning manager. And so then we would have, you know, more of an entry-type level on the bottom end. So he would move up. As far as the plans examiner goes, our goal is to try to do more stuff over the counter. You know, we take, you know, five, eight, 10 days to do a plan review. There are certain things we're already doing historically, we used to do over the counter, a pool permit, things like that. That shouldn't take, you know, a week or 10 days to do. So for the plans examiner was, right now, Dave pretty much does all the commercial plan review. So that has kind of hindered us when it comes to updating Chapter Nine, the Property Maintenance Code or the new fees things. And tonight, we're gonna talk about the new 2018 building code, 2019 building code. So our goal is to try to get up to speed, as Bryant was saying. If this auction's gonna happen on the state land this year and we're gonna start doing all the entitlement, that's kind of the planning side. But at the same time, we want to roll out this new permitting software as well as try to just do a plan review a lot quicker that we've essentially been doing in-house.
So what will the entry level, if we have people in our department moving up, which I love to hear, people that have been here, they've, you know, they've worked hard, they've been loyal to the, to the city, you know, give them the opportunity to move up, absolutely. What will the entry level be? Are they co-compliance or what will they?
No, it would be another planner. So Sidney, who's been here a while, he has a lot of experience in Queen Creek and City of Phoenix and Mesa, he would move up to the senior level and then we would hire, essentially backfill his position. So Sidney, Sidney will see tomorrow night. I don't know if he's presented here or not, and maybe he did once. But tomorrow night will be the presentation on Lennar, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
One net new library page position that is going to allow for us to stay open on Monday and Wednesday nights. So Spencer's worked some great magic with some of those resources to allow for that service to be, to be, you know, in the city. And then continued focused effort on fleet, Public Works has done and continues to do a great job in maintaining fleet services for our community and as, and this budget contemplates the continued investment allowing for that, for that services to be, to be maintained. The next slide is a, is a 10, is a symbol of the $10 purchase of what it is in the city. And sometimes people wonder when they purchase, like how much, where all our taxes go. And we like to show this as, yes, 2.4% is the number for city sales tax. But remember also the county has a sales tax at 1.6 and the state sales tax is at 5.6. So this slide does a great job of showing that it's 24 cents on a $10 purchase. That's the city's portion, 16 cents is county sales tax and then 56 cents goes to the state. I always like to remind everyone that the city of Apache Junction does not levy a property tax. General fund revenues, the great proportion, almost 50% is in city sales tax. State sales tax is at 15%. State shared revenue is the 5.3 million, which is the intergovernmental revenue that comes back to us based on our population. And then the county vehicle license tax is at 9% and then the rest is at 11. General fund departments, investment continues to be consistent to your goals and objectives in public safety and in community services like parks and rec and library. Gives a little perspective from that standpoint.
The pie charts make it real easy when you're talking to people. They make it, the visual, they're like, it's a lot easier for them to understand when you're out talking to people.
Me too.
That's why I always snap pictures so I have it right with me and then I can say.
Yeah, I'd like to have a copy of this, Bryant.
We will get that to you. So we'll, Anna, will you be able to help get a copy to the mayor and council? I think it's in your, well, we'll make sure we get it. Her fund revenues, here's the number that I had before that was just over 5 million. 65% from the HERF and then another 31% from county sales tax. This last slide before we take questions, is this an update on the process today? Tonight's presentation was the first public open meeting about the next fiscal year, 2019-2020 budget. We will have a tentative budget adoption special meeting on Monday, May 20th with an anticipated final budget adoptions meeting on Monday, June 17th. Again, this is the first meeting. We thank you for all your help as well in setting and establishing our vision and our goals and priorities, council. This is my presentation tonight. We have department directors here and my budget team here to answer any questions.
Bryant, can you post this whole thing on the website?
Yes.
This entire?
We can, yeah. We certainly will.
You mean the pie charts? Including the pie charts.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just, we'll just, yeah. I'll just put it there, yeah.
It's a good, simple presentation that makes it a lot easier to understand.
And we have a simple.
Unless you want to read the whole budget.
Yeah, the whole budget is very detailed and it, and it's often the case that the budget presentation is meant to be not only just a financial document and a policy document, but it's also a communication tool, right, Al? It's a communication opportunity to educate and help folks understand how. And I often spend time with residents, talking about fund accounting and how we can spend certain things, certain ways, and we certainly love to get that out there.
And the website, we'll have it posted on. The shortcut directly to that page will be ajcity.net/budget. So that's what we're, we'll have it. Correct.
Any more questions?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to have us revisit what I talked about last year was the use of the $80,000 for the Health and Human Services Fund that is in the city council budget. I understand the, that we use it to fund nonprofits throughout the city. I'd just like to reiterate the fact that I think it could be used in a more effective manner. The money that the citizens give the city could be used in a more effective manner to do things such as help us build and maintain our roads. And as we could see by the latest memo, I guess, from about the CDBG funding, we're gonna be losing about $90,000 this next year to put in curb and gutter and sidewalks. And so that could be used there. We could use the money to further and expedite the process to update the remodeling project at the, the call center, the 911 call center for the police department. And there's just various things that could be used to further the vision of the city. and put us forward. And I understand the fallback about, um, the money has been used to, um, fund nonprofits for the last 30 years. But I strongly believe in our city and the citizens in our city to step up and fund those nonprofits if they are asked to do it. And there's been numerous times throughout just this year that, um, our citizens have stepped up and done that. You know, uh, I think it was last summer, they raised almost six, over $60,000 for the, um, the animal shelter. When the, um, food, food bank needed money to repair or buy a new truck, they stepped up and did that. Just this last week, or the last, in the last month, they raised $148 million for the Boys and Girls Club. And I think it's just a way that...
148 million?
Well, I'm sorry, 148,000. That would've been a heck of a deal, wouldn't it? That would've been a big deal.
It would've been nice.
We could've, we could've hit them up for some money if that's the case. But it's just something to think about and, you know, uh, just ideology, it's one of those things if we, uh, it, it, it's, they're, they're nonprofits, they get IRS, um, uh, they don't have to pay taxes on the money they get. It's not meant for governments to fund nonprofits. If anybody remembers, last year I went through all that stuff. I'd just like to revisit it and, uh, see what anybody else thinks about it.
I'd like to make, you wanna go first?
I would.
I, I, I think it's, I, I li, I hear you. I understand where you're coming from, but I think it's very important to also realize that the money that we get in sales tax comes from some of the very people we're trying to help. They donate to our city in that way also, so we are helping our own people. And yes, nonprofits get a break, but nonprofits must spend every dime that they make on certain things. They, they cannot just stuff it in their pockets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I really feel that the city's contribution to Health and Human Services is a needed thing and it's a good thing, so philosophically, we simply disagree.
I wanna make some comments too. When I first got on council, I kinda had the same thinking that Jeff did until I saw what this, what these nonprofits do. And how many times do you hear of Apache Junction being ranked up so high on one of the number one places to retire? This is one of the kind of things that makes it one of the great places to retire to. By adding to the quality of life. And it would, it, it just helps the whole general area and, which, which makes it easier for real estate people to sell houses. And it, it's kind of a economic development tool also because it, uh, it, it makes people to reinvest and to wanna settle here and live here for not only when they retire, but for when the old, when their loved ones retire also. Krista?
Real quick, just, you know, we always talk about shopping local, donating local is important. And so these dollars stay in Apache Junction to help our families and, uh, children, uh, in our communities. These, these dollars are not helping people outside of our community, so that's something to keep in mind too. It's one of the, actually one of the requirements when these organizations apply, so...
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
I know how you feel. And I can't disagree more. And I think it is our duty, as, as the small portion of the budget that it is and the process to which the nonprofits have to apply, none of it's easy. But we've also turned down nonprofits for items that we didn't think were necessary. Where food, um, the basic needs, nonprofits can't supply to all of our citizens. They just can't, because from one day to the next, life changes. And life can hit you in the face faster than you realize it. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I think it is part of our budget to help the citizens that just need a leg up. Our churches in the area do a fabulous job. They, I, I'm just dumbfounded at the amount of support that they send out, but it's still not enough. And from today, it might be to not enough, but tomorrow, we have no idea what tragedy might hit a family, so I, I think it's most important and I just have to disagree.
Anyone else?
That's it Bryant, are we back to you? Anna, that's it for me. We'll be bringing back, um, any other thoughts or questions you have as you go through this time period, let us know. We'll keep answering those questions. And again, wanna thank all the department directors for all their work and for being here tonight, and we will bring back the tentative budget on that date as, as we kind of anticipated.
Okay.
And we'll be, yeah, oh, you have it, okay.
So I think a lot of staff can go home now.
Are we gonna have a mass exodus? Do we stop proceedings until they all leave?
Have, have a good evening. And we're gonna go on to item number two. Presentation and discussion on a draft request for proposal for solid waste.
Mayor, council, I'll get it started and hand it over to Heather here. May 1st, staff presented to council ASU's reports for recommendation to require solid waste and recycling to our residents. Council direction to staff was a draft request for proposal for residential solid waste, recycling services and hazardous waste. Staff, which includes Bryant, Matt, Anna, Larry, Heather and myself, met several, several times. We reviewed the ASU report, reviewed data from other municipalities and asked providers general questions. We attempted to provide an RFP that meets the city's needs and requirements while being general enough to allow the provider to choose their method of operation. Everyone on the review committee is here tonight, we'll do our best to answer any questions you may have during the presentation. And I'll hand it over to Heather. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, Heather Hodgman, Public Works Management Analyst. So at prior direction last year, um, as Mike mentioned, staff went and put together a request for proposal. So I'll just kinda go over the scope of work and kinda what it entails as a brief synopsis. So we're looking at an eight-year term with an option to renew for two additional, so not to exceed a 10-year term for the, whoever the contractor will be. The scope of work is actually to provide solid waste, recycling and disposal. It is for single-family homes, duplexes, all the way up to four-plex residential units. Does not include, um, commercial, so commercial wouldn't be in here. It wouldn't include manure and large animal waste, such as those kind of ideas. Anything over four-plex units would not be included. The standard service would be a pickup once a week for recycling as well as solid waste. Um, they would provide a new 96-gallon solid waste and recycling container for our residents. And on, included would be a once-a-month bulk trash pickup on top of our quarterly. So that would continue to go, so there'd be an option for the service as well. Additional services, if a resident actually wants another 96-gallon receptacle, whether it's a solid waste or whether it's recycling, that's an option for them. To get those repaired, 'cause a lot of times too much up and down on, with the hydraulics on the machine, they break and hopefully we can get those repaired. Dumpster services, that can be a two-yard, all the way up to a 20-yard, um, delivery and removal for our residents. Um, and then we wanted to get a price per rate, per ton, for residents to utilize a potential drop-off service. Billing, the contractor shall be responsible to make all arrangements with our residents to transition to the new vendor. The contractor shall provide associated pricing for part-time residents anywhere between one month, not to exceed two months. Vehicles, so we were requesting a list of brand-new vehicles, brand-new equipment, to include smart backup technology. They shall describe also how they're going to access any of the steep grades or narrow roads for our residents. And they should be clearly marked with identification on their equipment. The collection routes, they will provide that route schedule. They'll also provide alternative ways to divide the city into different routes to improve efficiencies. The city does desire that the city is serviced Monday through Thursday. We added an alternative bid, so additional pricing options for our residents. Is a curbside bulk trash and recycling pickup by appointment only. This would be an option if so, they so choose to bid. Would give residents an opportunity, call the trash provider, schedule that, and they'd actually pick up on that day and pay for, pay for it. Additional bulk trash pickups, so if it's not once a month and they want it after two weeks, and they can call for that as well, that would be a, a price. Annual Christmas tree curbside pickup. The city offers two locations, um, every year, so this would have an option for them to pick up instead of doing the, twice a year, at two locations, at the north side and south side of the city. Another option is the green waste, green waste collection and green waste 96-gallon receptacle, which I don't believe any of the providers offer that right now. Administrative fee, this was a lot of discussion between staff. We reached out to a couple municipalities. Some have administrative fees to cover the cost of just the administration of the contract. Two of them collect the fee, one does not. So Town of Queen Creek does not collect a fee for administration.
We wanted, Heather to interrupt, this is kind of a big one. The cities and towns that are most, these are the most recent cities and towns that are closest to us and geographically, who have also most recently gone from what I call our current system, which is subscription-based. So when I say a subscription-based, I'm talking about the, the contract that a, that a resident may have with a certain company, one of the three or four that we have. When the, each of these towns recently, in the last few years, have gone from that same system that we're familiar with to one company providing service to their whole community, and each of them have a different reason for what they do. So Florence collects the fee, but Florence also administers the entire utility program. They have a whole utility department already, which we don't. Town of Queen Creek just chose not to do a fee. The Town of Fountain Hills does do one and they're a little bit more like way we are set up. So we can talk about what those are, but we're not really re, ready yet just to see what that amount would be. But there are administrative impacts, contractually, we would at a staff level be required to do because ultimately when something's not working, just like a MediaCom or Centrlink or something, there's always some resident that is gonna turn to you or us to, to want to know, and so we'll need to be, to some degree, depended upon and responsible to that contract. And so the fee could be used for offsetting the costs related to a staff member that has to administrate, to deal with the contract, to deal with residents, to deal with also making sure the contractor that we have onboard, if we go down that route, to be able to, to carry out their contract.
Um, here's our proposed timeline, so we're looking at potentially releasing this RFP in June. A pre-bid meeting towards the end of June, June 24th, bid opening July 11th. We're looking at a potential tentative award for August of this year with tentative start date of March of 2020. The reason for March of 2020 is, um, we received some word from the current contractors, the three providers, three or four providers. January's a little bit harder, 'cause it's right after the, the, that's the start of their new year for them. And midsummer's harder when we can't reach our winter visitors, so we're trying to come up with a in-between tentative start date. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first of all, why are we excluding multifamilies of more than four units, mobile home parks, et cetera?
I can tackle that, I, some of this Larry, come on up, um, Larry, so this was a huge team effort between Heather and Mike and me. So we went through this a lot and it has to do, Larry, talk a little bit about the commercial...
Let me explain why I'm asking, okay? Because if we want a single company going down residential streets one time a week rather than the multiples, et cetera. Some of our, our apartment units that are more than four, et cetera, our mobile home parks, et cetera, they're, they're located in neighborhoods on neighborhood streets that also have single-family housing. So you're still gonna have that same traffic going. I don't see how that eliminates it.
For instance, where I live...
Yeah.
Winchester is full of apartments over there and they're all come down the streets.
So if those are duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, those would all be as part of the city contract. If it's five units or above, those larger apartment complexes would be a commercial account. So a lot of cities, most cities, they kinda even, a four-plex, people will argue to try to keep that on a dumpster and a commercial account. So for, we know that we have mobile home parks sprinkled throughout the city on various backways and byways. And so I don't know that 100% we would be able to get some of the smaller ones. But I think traditionally, and again, you can look at it a different way if you like, but traditionally, most cities have said if it's single-family up to some number, that'll be part of the city contract, if you will. Beyond that, for businesses, commercial-type businesses, multifamily, restaurants, all that stuff, usually is still left to the private sector and they get to choose who they wanna pick. So it doesn't pick up everybody, but essentially gets all the residential under one umbrella.
So, can I...
Different type of residential, but, yeah. And a lot of these parks do already have their own, try to do recycling efforts and, you know, the major parks will kind of already treat it as a commercial.
So Larry, why couldn't we just say any housing that, that's non-commercially served housing? You know, because we have a lot of little seven-unit mobile home parks and 10-unit mobile home parks, but they'll still have their own dumpster. So, but they're not their own individual dumpsters.
So that's where the trick is...
Just non-commercially served residential units.
That's exactly what tonight's for, to get this input, yeah, that's, that's...
Again, you could have an opt, an opt-in type program, maybe there's some smaller parks that would wanna be. Maybe there's a better value for them if they opt in. That's something to be explored, but you kinda get into the discussion when you start dealing with condos and condominium projects. Are they single-family or are they not single-family?
But those are commercially served.
So those would be clear to us, yeah. But I think what you're getting, so when we get, I like the four, we have a ton of those fourplexes that have individuals, so it, it includes those, but we can look as a language of opt-in for some of these mobile home parks that traditionally are served like as if it's a single-family home.
One of the issues you run into, the larger, the complex, if you will, 'cause if we're gonna do these 96-gallon toters, if they're called, is that over a certain, um, uh, number of units, you're gonna have, you know, instead of four out there, you could have 16 or... It gets to be, okay, do we really want that many? It's a lot easier for them to do a larger four-yard dumpster than it is to do eight toters.
Well, like along Sixteenth Avenue, that, that just looks like garbage can alley on trash...
Some of that is in the county and a county island, and we have had issues east of Idaho, I believe.
West of Idaho.
West of Idaho, yeah. Yeah, those are harder to do because the, you're doing a single-family pickup if we're not doing the alley. If everything's out to the curb, then Southerners, you know, the house...
And if they're used to out to the curb, and maybe that's how we opt them in.
And they're in no hurry to pull them in after they're empty either.
No, they're not.
Right, right.
'Cause I think...
But that's what I was trying to say, on Southern, we've gotten complaints where there is a county island and they just stay out there, and then we've sent letters, we worked with Public Works to send a letter to get them, to bring it in within a certain period of time. So, again, there's, there are just options to consider. Like I said, most cities will, there'll be a breakpoint, you can decide what you want for the breakpoint. But another, again, somebody might decide it might be cheaper for them to be part of our contract, that really the hauler's gonna manage anyway.
We have to vote to do this first, and I know Chip has some questions, and Krista.
And I have a couple more.
Gail's still up then.
Okay. When I read the ASU study on this, on the bulk pickup, one of the... When I read the ASU study on this, on the bulk pickup, one of the things that they had included in there was every participant would receive so many vouchers per year for bulk pickup. Like in Town of Gilbert, it's once a month they do bulk pickup. But I understand that you can call for it, but it sounded the way it was written, there would still be an additional charge for it. Is that correct?
How it's written is correct. But we can definitely look at what ASU's voucher and potentially put that in there as well.
Okay, and the last thing, and one of the reasons why I thought this was fabulous is that we were going to require them to use our dump. And there wasn't anything in here that said that. So depending on who it, because it not only do we receive funding for it, but it also would fill up faster and we'd get our parks sooner. But I didn't see where that was in here at all either.
Maybe Larry can answer, I can answer that too.
We had it in, we took it out, we put it in. So it, it is, I don't know if it's more.
And I understand that would be a separate agreement with Republic if Republic didn't win the, the RFP.
Right, it was to try to get an apples-to-apples response or bid. If you require it, then do others cry foul because, well, they can do it cheaper because they only have to haul it, you know, locally? Or if everybody's required to go to this landfill, it ends up being, I don't know, more of a sticky situation in terms of can we legally require someone to go to a specific dump?
Well.
I know we'd like to fill it up quicker, yes. If everybody went there, maybe the cost of it will be, it makes more sense to go there. It, it just seemed to kind of complicate things to require it to go to the one dump.
I understand that, but if they choose to drive further, to go to their dump of choice, I guess, it is an economic thing for the city as far as we lose money for our tonnage right away. So the city, we do have a legitimate reason for wanting them to dump there. And if they want to use another dump, see if they'll pay us the same tonnage fees to take our trash.
Does it RAD have their own in Kearney or something?
Yeah, everything goes to the transfer.
And it seems, it seems to me that since we will be looking at a bid, and part of that bid is the cost of service. And if the cost of service on the particular company who dumps at our dump is obviously lower, because it would be than others, then they would win it anyway, so.
Part of it too was what if there's a provider, again, I'm not saying it would happen or could happen, but so you have someone that's a company that's not Republic. They then have to negotiate with Republic to go take stuff there. They may save money or that's something kind of out of our control, that if RAD or Waste Management said, okay, Republic, we won the bid, we'd like to come and talk to you about sort of a, a larger contract. So that it left more uncertainty. Yeah. And that might be cheaper for them to, but ultimately, we're, we were trying to keep everything more apples-to-apples.
So this is the true opal, apples-to-apples and the open market. Let's see who gets the lowest price for our residents.
Well, and RAD is still has all of the county island areas. But because this is us trying to have less traffic on our streets, this still does not include the county islands that are within our city boundaries, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And we just can't do that.
So eventually, we'll have an ordinance that goes along, we currently have an ordinance in chapter nine. I think it's nine point five or nine point six, nine dash six. So ultimately, that will have to get updated by the council as well. That will probably happen, you know, after the RFP is issued as we're getting ready to do a contract. But I don't think we can go regulate in the county island. So it would, again, I suppose if there were an HOA there, a neighborhood, a subdivision, and they wanted to opt in and it's cheaper, they could negotiate that.
So my neighborhood HOA has one carrier only. So.
We'll have to work out how their HOA, is that a year-to-year contract? How does that get absorbed over time? You know, that, I think also will need to be worked out with whoever wins the contract. Is what about, do we phase them out over one year, two years, three years? I don't know how long those contracts go for. But again, the goal is that everybody would be, in theory, paying about the same as opposed to, right now, we know that there's different prices, some offer recycling, some don't recycle, offer recycling.
Joel, a legal question. Do the HOA contracts preempt the city code or this contract that we might enter into?
Mr. Powell, no. However, there's a constitutional provision that says thou shall not interfere with contracts that other people enter into. So say they have a ten-year contract. Say an HOA has a ten-year contract with a company. And then the city comes in, what, nine months from now or a year from now? Says, hey, that contract, it's canceled because we're requiring this. I think the city probably has the power to do that. However, I would have to research that thoroughly. I mean, ten years is a long time to have a contract, but not for the city to have a contract. The city's going to hopefully have a ten-year contract. But there could be a damage claim, saying, well, city, you just, we just had nine more years to go. And look what you did and you, you took a different bidder. And now we lost X number of dollars. There could be a claim. And then possibly a lawsuit that comes after that. So that's something I'd have to look into.
Plus, don't some major ways have private roads?
Yes, if they're, they do. Some, some do, not all of them do.
There's not a whole lot.
So do you care about private roads? Now I guess that's the question.
Well, there's houses on them.
There are houses.
They have garbage.
But there's city streets that lead up to the private roads.
And that's the intent, is to cut down on the number of trucks per day, per week, per day that affects Mr. Weaver's budget. That's the bottom line, right?
Well, I think that's the bottom line and also that your goal to maintain a, a community that has, that's clean, that's, that's vibrant, that has trash pickup, that, you know, we talked about in retreats, what method or ideas or ways can be utilized to help, help that process? And this was one of the ideas that came up. And if you go out and bid this and it comes in cheaper than what everybody's receiving in current rates, that's another idea that has come up, but we don't know yet until you go out and bid it. So that's kind of, this is tonight, just the first step in getting info from you all on, on RFQ.
Yeah, we were looking at really some multiple benefits. As we heard from the ASU studies, there's about a hundred code cases or the fire department responding to people burning their trash in their backyard. And we think that this will help along with the reduction of people just taking their trash to the landfill four times a year, which is more expensive than if they had it, somebody come and get it, which we don't fully understand. But again, we have a lot of code cases where there are just trucks and trailers filled up and then they haul it once a week or whatever they do. So uniformity, I think, is what we're trying to get at.
Chip?
Yeah, well, one of the goals I understand is to have everyone in the city have trash, I'll say, pickup or service. How are we going to enforce that?
Again, there'll be an ordinance that goes along with this, that you'll see, like right now, we have, just when the people don't bring their cans in, it becomes a little bit of a nightmare. But we'll be, have hours of when you can take it out the night before, when you can bring it back in. If someone is, doesn't, everybody will be required to have trash service. So if they don't participate, they start burning it, I think there'll be avenues when we look at the changes, which we're just, I think our first meeting on the ordinance is, is that tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yeah.
Is to talk about, you know, bringing back an ordinance for you to consider. And then certainly enforcement is like any other city ordinance that we would do.
So what, what concerns me in the aspect is number one is we have a, a lot of winter visitors that own property here, that have a house in it. And they're vacant for a period of time. I saw in the presentation, you were saying from one to six months for winter visitors. In the aspect on it, well, they would not have a trash out there for pickup during the entire time they're gone. To me, this would become a huge red flag. This house is not occupied right now. And that's something that you don't want to happen in the aspects on it. Also, and I know, there's families that are, I would say have teamed up together and have a trash service. And I know myself, we have one bag of trash or two bags of trash a, a week. That's the most we ever have had. So if you teamed up with a, a neighbor or another neighbor, there's, you know, you go together, you split the cost. Because you don't have a huge amount of trash that you generate in your home. And so in other words, we're passing on an increased cost to some people that have, I'll say, fixed budgets and they've teamed up to help. When it comes to fifty dollars a quarter, that can be something that's kind of hurts, especially if you have a lot of medical bills on top of it.
Yeah, I think it's, we're going to, it's going to be people that are going to be inconvenienced because they're used to handling their trash with their neighbor or putting it in the truck and taking it once a week or whatever that is. I can't say that that's not going to impact some people. So we did look at, some cities have decided or allow people to have different sizes of carts. We talked about that. Most cities are not offering, you know, three choices of which size cart you want based on your household. That still is something you could consider. As a sta, as a staff, we weren't recommending that, just to make it uniform. Everybody gets a ninety-six gallon dumpster or, or toter, if you will.
And Chip, I, I just wanted to say that. And in Prescott, they do offer the two sizes because there's a lot of people there that are only there in the summertime, they're not there in the wintertime. And that's why they said they did it. But in like Mesa and Gilbert and Prescott, your trash bill's part of your water and sewer bill. So you don't have a choice. And I understand the part about it being inconvenient to some people because we've never made one ruling here that fits everybody. It, it just, it can't happen. But I understand the sharing part. And I think that would be up to the administrative winner of the RFP to have a category for combined trash, say, if you want to say it that way.
That also brings up a question, my neighbors now got a well. They don't have city or water, they don't have an Arizona water bill. So it would be a completely separate bill that would come to them.
It would be billed out by the, whoever wins the contract. So the city would not be under this proposal being sent out the bill. So they, still, it's required, but the invoicing, the payment of the bill would be by the provider, contractor.
I think this is just as we grow, these things have to come in.
There were growing pains in.
Did you have more?
Fountain Hills, there were growing pains, they're trying to tweak it a little bit. Queen Creek, who'd you say, Matt?
Eloy recently.
Eloy recently, so. Again, this is a requirement, as we understand, if you live east of Mountain View or you live north of McKellips, you're required to have trash right now, today.
We're, we're one of the last cities in Arizona that doesn't require trash pickup. And I have a resident who bent, bent my ear for thirty minutes on his neighbor who burns trash. And I would, I, I fully anticipate you getting an opportunity to get to meet them. They're not, they are very excited about this, this action that the city, and there'll be many people that aren't, you know? But I think that this, this has been a goal they've asked us to do and bring forward.
It's a tough call, I've experienced both. You have people with breathing problems and that is a, that's, it gets serious when you've got that stuff coming in to the house. People use evaporative coolers when they burn trash right next door. It actually gets sucked into your house. Now you've got somebody with breathing trouble, trouble, it's a health issue. But like Chip said, my concern too is enforcement. How do you, how do you, how are we going to identify that people don't have trash? How are you going to go after people that aren't signing up or whatever it is that they would have to do? Maybe they don't have trash piling up because they're doing exactly what Chip said, they're sharing, they're hauling to the dump. So then is it just because, are we going to get them, we're going to ding them because they don't have a receptacle or?
Everybody would get a receptacle.
Okay, so then it's their.
And then those receptacles have an RFID chip on them. So when it picks it up, there's a scan, it knows that, because that, you get a complaint, oh, the, you didn't put your can out in time, right? You missed it? Well, then if the truck didn't pick it up, if it wasn't there, they can't pick it up. So there's, you get a lot of reduction in callbacks when people say they never came and got it. And the driver would say, well, that's because the can wasn't out on time. So usually these trucks will have a scanner and they'll know that that was dumped that day.
So they're going to have chips in the trash cans?
On the top of the scanner, it'll scan whether there's, your trash was picked up that day. So when you call and say it wasn't picked up, they can say it was, or you didn't have your can out.
I just have a couple other questions. I'm not sure if they're going to be for you or if they're going to be for Heather. This monthly bulk pickup, Heather, is there going to, would there be an additional fee? I might have missed if you said, or is that going to be included or would that be an additional fee?
It would be an additional fee.
At the, okay.
That's how it's proposed, right? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, at the request of the customer, if they want, if they had a big yard cleanup in their backyard and they want to get a bunch, they're going to come have that place there and they.
But this process allows for the private market to contract it out, to get a competitive bid. Now, if we wanted to go out and ask, have that be as a service, a monthly fee, we can do that. It just pushes the pressure up. One of the things we haven't talked about yet is recycling. I don't know if you've watched Safford, if you've watched Tucson, but there's pressures putting up. Count, Vice Mayor Wilson talked about fifty bucks a quarter. Well, you go out and bid it, maybe it's less than that, but then there's pressures on recycling or, or bulk pickup. So every little thing we add to it could add up more to it. And I think one of the major goals is to cost save for each one of your residents.
Yeah. The other question is now, is this, are they going to be marked the City of AJ trash trucks? Or are they going to be marked whatever the private company is?
The, the vehicles or the receptacles or both or?
Both, the trucks and the receptacles. Is this going to be like the City of AJ?
No.
I think there was discussion between staff that it would not be marked City of Apache Junction. It would actually have their insignia on their vehicles and their trash receptacles.
Last question, sound, might sound like a silly question, but for people that might not know, green waste, you mentioned green waste. Can you just share what that, exactly what that means?
Yard work, your grasses, your trimmings, anything like that, that you are cutting down in your yard. So just an option to put out there for the potential contractors to have that ability.
Would that be a separate receptacle?
It would be, it would be like a, I think Mesa has it and it's, it's actually green. It's a green and then they have recycle blue and then black for trash. So and not everyone's required to do that, so it's not, it's an individual basis if they want to do the green waste.
If you as a customer wanted that option, you'd pay an extra.
Green waste because of my yard.
If you, as a customer wanted that option, you'd pay an extra, whatever the bid is, ten bucks a month or something, have that green waste can. It'd be an extra charge to the customer. And that, that's why we're asking, what would it cost if you, we could offer this to customers? It's not, it's an, it's an alternate bid, is that what we called it?
Yes.
So we could decide later whether we want to include that in the, the award of the contract.
We're going to come back to Chip, but I think Robert has one question.
Uh, this is more, I think, for Bryant. I've noticed there's a trend where cities are doing away with, with recycling. Has this, has this been in conversation through Apache Junction? If, I mean, is it something that we may follow suit? If so, I mean, that could change the whole dynamic of this contract, could it not?
Could change the whole dynamic of the contract, Your Honor. Thank you. I will say this, we have fought so hard to get single-stream recycling, to be able to have that opportunity to be part of the bid. I think we absolutely want them to give us a number on what it would be to do once-a-week trash, once-a-week pickup for, for recycling. One of the policy options we could have is you could ask us to put in the RFP, how much would it cost for, to twice a week just trash? That's a major, that's what Safford, that's what, that's what one of the cities doing. Tucson, I think, is saying you're only going to take cardboard, Larry, help me out, aluminum, paper, some of the, certain types for a while.
Nothing wax.
Nothing glass and plastics, certain plastics. Nothing glass and plastics, certain plastics, maybe.
Of a certain grade, but nothing coated in wax. Some of your cardboards now are coated in wax.
They don't want it, just throw it straight in the trash. We have talked about it, it's a, it's a little bit of a, we don't know what to do, so we kind of think, well, maybe we should just ask them for a price and let you all decide if it's worth it. Because some pressures are high enough to maybe to change that. But in some ways I look at it, well, gosh, we, we worked so hard to get recycling.
In theory, would that not, if you went to just two trash pickups a month, would that not cut down the dumps timeline in half? If we're going for.
Larry, help me out, or Mike on, I thought state law said that you have to have two pickups a week. So it would, it would, it would, if you're looking at it that way, that's significant. But I think it's still a significant savings if they know that it's twice a week pickup and it's trash and it goes straight to the landfill. But help me out with that.
The landfill is also spaced upon a timeline or a height, right? And when they were talking about, they're saying, hey, it's gonna take this, this long because recycling is getting rid of half of our trash. So if it were recycling were out and we gave them back that other half of the trash, would that not in theory shorten the timeline? What, two thousand thirty right now they're, they're running to?
You're right, no, in theory, that's right.
So part of, a lot of the trash is going waste management and RAD are going outside the city. So we actually have never been able to quantify how much trash is leaving the city. If we're all collected together in one here and if it did go to one landfill, how much shorter? There's seventeen years left, I think, on the current contract. It was nineteen, now it's seventeen. So with recycling, that changes it even more. So some cities are subsidizing recycling because they still wanna make it work, but taking things out that there's no market for anymore. So the market's gonna dictate what is still recyclable. Whatever's not recyclable is gonna go in the landfill. But the idea is if it were all, again, through the bidding process, one entity doing it, and if they had it all go to this landfill, then I think it would be less than the seventeen years.
Chip, do you have anything?
Just a clarification on the green. They can, just so the citizens out there, they can still put the green waste in their regular trash if they wanted to. It's not that they were gonna be restricted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then just to follow up, you know, part of the reason that we're talking about this and that we started this, what, two, I don't know, two, three years ago? I can't remember how long it's been.
It's been discussed for, this is kind of my third round.
Yeah.
And so, so this is as far as this community's gone in terms of the, the actual getting to a bid.
But the whole, the whole part of it was to get, you know, we, we talk about economic development and putting, getting people to move here and getting people to wanna live here and getting the health aspects of it and everything like that. And one of the biggest, well, I'm not gonna say one of the biggest, but, but a big battle that we have right now is blighted properties. And this would help to rectify that. I'm not gonna say totally clear it up because people still hide their, their trash in their backyards. But this is just one of those ways that we can do it. And, and like Councilmember Evans said, we, we, there is no way that we can make everybody happy on any decision that we make. I mean, every time we, no, no, every time a horse issue comes up, we make somebody mad. Every time a street light comes up, we make somebody mad. But this is just a way for us to move forward, especially when we're gonna start moving down south and, and we're gonna try to attract developers to come in here. It's just gonna be a way to get more and more people to come in and understand that we are moving into the twenty-first century.
Yeah, I forgot one of my other questions. And you had said that we were not gonna be handling any manure from livestock. So how is that gonna be handled?
I believe the staff had talked about whatever is currently done right now. And I, I think that it's up to the residents to then dispose of the manure.
I don't think we would like to change that, right? Is that currently?
That was the consensus.
And doesn't the sewer district take that?
Yeah, well, yeah, you can, if you haul it, but also through, one of the trash companies, you can have a dumpster put out on your property and you put it into the dumpster and they haul it away along with all your other trash that you have. So it's all rolled into one. But it's done through the dumpster side.
And that's how I used to do it. But you know, Gilbert actually took trash and manure in their curb side pickups too, which I thought was kind of unusual. But that's why they said they did it there.
Vice Mayor, we'll look at the manure issue a little bit more. There's a little bit more we can research. The manure issue on terms of the ninety-six cans, our providers, whether we're in the system or not, really encouraged, a little bit different system. And so it may be something we have to kind of.
Well, I know there's some, some of the trash service, they absolutely refuse to take manure, period. They claim all the damage and everything that's done internally with it. But on the same token, what I was trying to go after is for example, like for example, the people that do have dumpsters that they put the manure into. And it also, at the time, they say you can also put your personal trash in there as well. So here we are now having someone that's outside, so how would we address that if they had them in the aspects on it? Proof that they have trash service and it's being done through a dumpster?
So the idea is, again, I don't know that we have all the answers tonight. We can certainly research it, but the idea that everybody gets a ninety-six gallon toter. If they fill that thing up and it's once or twice a week and they have more to put in their manure dumpster and somebody hauls that away and it goes to landfill, I guess they could. But it kind of just goes back to the idea, well, I'm sharing with my neighbor. Well, I'm, now I'm putting my trash in with my manure. I, at some level, you just kind of have to decide, is everybody gonna get a toter or not? That's, I don't know, my, the only way I can.
And just, and just, and just on the issue of like, if we have separate totes or containers, whatever you call it, like one for refuge or green and, and recycling or whatever. All we're, all we would be mandating at this point would be trash. If two or three neighbors wanted to share a green one or a recycling one or a manure one or whatever it might be, there would be no, we, that would be a way for us to help the neighbors save money on that, in that, in those instances. You know, I, I, when I fill up my recycling tote, whatever you call it, probably about once a month, if that might, I mean, it takes me a long time. And it would be silly for me to pay when me and my four neighbors could share one of those. Because there's not gonna be mandated to have each one of those, right?
Yeah, I think for recycling, it's, the world's changing all the time. So it, it used to be for some people, you might have two bags of trash. You have more in recycling than you actually do trash. Now it might flip where what can't get recycled is gonna go, it could go the other way. Now you have three bags instead of two because recycling is gonna be.
The reason it's changed is because China is not buying it anymore.
Right. We haven't been able to figure it out here how to not throw a pizza box with pepperoni in it in the recycle bin.
But just for example, yesterday I finally had the time and chance to clean up my yard. And I put the first load into my garbage. Now I've probably got another five totes of, you know, green waste to put in. There's gonna take me five weeks to fill it up unless I take it to free dump week, actually. But that's a thought. Then I gotta take off time from work. But anyway, that would be a time when neighbors could share a tote and, and use that.
Yeah, some cities are experimenting just with compost. So you take your eggshells and your coffee grounds and there's one toter in the cul-de-sac and everybody takes then, city comes in and does that. Because there's a lot of food waste that could be composted that shouldn't go in the landfill. Again, that's maybe, you know, three, three contracts from now before we get mature enough to the point where we can start thinking about those type of options, but.
I haven't weighed in yet, then we're gonna go back to Gail. So I'm for mandatory pickup because I know what it can do to the city. But being a free enterprise person, I don't like picking winners and losers. And if RAD hadn't come out here, our rates would be really, really higher because RAD came in, made everybody come down to, to a reasonable price. And it could be like MediaCom. Everybody hates the fact that we only, we don't have any choices with MediaCom. You, if you want cable, you, that's who you have to have. If you want trash pickup, well, you're gonna, it's gonna be forced, forced on them. I've had to do this before. If they skip you and you call them and they give you attitude, you can change companies now. We won't have that anymore. So I also have a couple questions that are kind of far-fetched, but if it happens. For instance, the janitorial contract on this, these buildings, the people made a low bid and they couldn't fulfill it. We had to re, renegotiate it. What if a company comes in so low and then all at once they can't do it? What, how would we, we'd have to send it out again for another bid?
So a bid and a request for proposal are two different things. A bid is lowest, is the lowest contracted amount and RFP isn't solely based on money. It's the responsibility responsiveness of the, of the contractor that bids. Smiths or documentation, price is part of it, but it's not the reason for the final potential award. So we have a, in the sample RFP that was submitted to you guys, there's actually how the, the, the scoring will, will go between staff once we get it. So an RFP is different than a bid. So then janitorial, for instance, are the, the RFP because that's how we did that one. But we had other issues with it. And then we had trying to work through those issues and they didn't get done, so we legally had to go through another RFP.
So what if, what if whoever wins this bid is just terrible and we have nothing but complaints? What, what can we do? What are our options?
It would be the same type of process. It would be the city representative working with them, keeping on top of them, constant communication, seeing what the issues are with the citizens, finding that out. Working very closely with the city manager's office and Joel to make sure we're legally doing what we need to be doing. Whether that is rectifying it and they'll rectify it or another avenue. So it would, constant communication.
So after the RFP process, there'll be a contract negotiation. And in that contract, there'll be those terms that we can either enforce the contract or get out of the contract or whatever the case.
We'll certainly have terms that if, if they aren't producing and providing services, we're gonna be able to go get another company here.
Gail?
The contract goes out with the RFP, so when they bid on it, they get to see what the contract's gonna look like.
The, the draft one.
A sample contract. There'll still be further, potential further negotiations to that contract.
And if there's a breach, then.
Page twenty-eight.
The term is on there, the actual thirty days or sixty days or whatever we had of potentially getting out of the contract.
So for everything you just said of, and especially this being the first time we're trying this, I would like to see an administration fee attached to this. Because staff is gonna have to intervene, answer questions, work with who's here, who's not here. It is gonna take staff time. And even though it's not the city itself collecting it, and we try to be as helpful, I, I don't wanna have to hire another person. But it's definitely going to take somebody away from their normal duties to participate in something that we're not making money on. Now, because the city twice a year has the hazardous waste pickup and appliance pickup, I went blind before I got through the whole thing. But could we have it? Because I think we'd get more of it picked up too, under that, if it's a voucher or whatever, that once a quarter, they did a hazardous waste or appliance pickup.
So staff had a lot of discussions on that. And there's some legalities regarding the hazardous pickup. The city has required anything that leaves with such an event or something like that. We have to keep a manifest for thirty years of every single thing that leaves our city, hazardous waste materials. That basically includes the tracking, once it leaves the site, where it goes, where it gets recycled, and I get the information back. So we would have to be able to mandate that with whomever.
Why wouldn't that be an administration on their part?
We can, here's one of the interesting answers to a question that we asked. One of the, so RAD, Waste and, RAD, Waste and Republic, Waste Services are huge companies. They are very sophisticated in their, yes, big. And in each of their questions, we asked them about household hazardous waste. They pretty much didn't want, if I, am I right on that? They don't, they said, if you've got a system you've got now, what they would prefer to do, Councilmember Evans, is either have a little factor, whether that's another twenty-five cents administrative fee to add another household hazardous waste event. Didn't understand what I'm saying? So in other words, if we have two and then, and whether through the administrative fee, depending on what the bid comes in at and how you feel in terms of how that looks to you, you could have a third one or even a quarterly one. It's just, of course, more money. But that's kind of my take on it, Heather, is, is when we talked to a couple of them, they kind of thought the, maybe the way that could best serve the residents and have more of them was to actually do it through the, through the service. They actually didn't wanna touch it.
God bless them. And the only other thing I wanna add is as little of trash as Councilmember Wilson has, I'm a very trashy person and my dumpster is usually full. Nobody argues.
Is that against the conduct of rules to laugh at that or?
Uh-oh, someone's shaking his head no.
There's no head shaking either.
No eye rolling. No, just trashy. I, I have one comment that I would like to make. I sincerely hope that we keep the recycling in for as long as we can. There may come a time where the tariffs on China are not this bad and we can get back to a somewhat normal situation.
Would you like us to go out and bid to see what the cost would be for, for recycling or, or no recycling or?
I think we need to know what it would be.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be a part of it, yeah.
Do we have it in there now, Mike?
Yeah, it's right.
Okay. You're mandated to do twice a week.
Thank you, Mike.
Unless you have recycling, then you can do it once a week.
So you've just cut the trips down to once a week. You're not cutting down the trash, you're cutting down the trips for the trash now.
Well, if, if there's no recycling, you're doubling your trash, right?
And then you got papers flying all over the place down at baseline.
Well, I mean.
Come on, then you gotta be in public works to go down there and pick it up, so.
Well, maybe they'll keep it under wraps, give, make, let the pigeons build the nest. But we've got Coffin building a hundred-plus homes and if we could do something that could expedite the closing of the dump and turn it into a park. Because we're hoping that, we approve these homes and we're hoping that down the road, people are gonna wanna get the land next to it and the land next to it and the land next to it. And I just fear that if come two thousand, you know, seventeen more years from now, you know, if that, the dump's still open, that, there's gonna be a big gap of land between the dump and where the new home's set up. I mean, I'm not against recycling, I'm just saying that it's becoming so expensive to recycle. And it's not just a matter of because China's not paying that much anymore, that's part of it, but because people aren't recycling properly. You know, that they're getting a recycle bin, but it's got food in there. I mean, you can, you can't, you can't teach that. I mean, you gotta, they gotta, they gotta have a moral fiber about this person and know the difference. And they just don't care. They just don't do it. And I mean, I'm not, you know, against the earth or nothing. I, I agree with recycling, you know what I'm saying? But I, I just think that if we have an opportunity.
Well, if there is a big gap, I want you to let me know because I wanna invest in it.
There's some right now, Robert.
Because it's gonna be big.
I know I wouldn't build with, along the fence line of a dump.
We can certainly get a quote from both.
They did in Queen Creek. They built right next to the old dump down there.
Anything, anyone else?
Can I ask you one thing? I know I had mentioned this to Bryant and Larry and Joel. The one thing that's missing in here is an accommodation for people with disabilities who cannot roll out that ninety-six gallon container even when empty. There is a provider now that makes an accommodation. You have to file a form every year from, signed by a doctor. I think it's important to have that in there to offer that particular service as an option.
Great idea.
We're going to add that to the RFP before it's.
And it shouldn't have to cost them extra just to have to have an accommodation. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, well, we'll ask them the, the, that's one of the, the ideas here is to, what it would cost for all of us to be involved.
Okay, we, uh, still have one more.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, we will, we'll take, we've taken great notes and we'll, we'll get back together as a committee, we are anyway, and we'll, we'll start re-upping this, this RFP and then have a chance for y'all to maybe take a real good look at it again. And then we need to go out and, and have a chance to see what the private market says with this and get input and see where it goes.
Okay, are we okay without a break? Keep going? We're gonna go on to item number one. Presentation and discussion on draft amendments for City Code, Volume One, Chapter Three.
Uh, work session or council meeting?
Your honor, Council Dave and Larry. He's pulling up, I did do a PowerPoint this time. The, the five, six one up at the top, first PowerPoint down from the folder, that one. I think I got the date right on this one. So, we, working with the vision and the mission, um, kind of revisiting the administrative code that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. We kind of talked about the purpose of it and kind of went over some items. Um, I did want, so one of the, the things that we did discuss was under the no permits required or where permits are exempt, um, was a question about things related to mechanical systems. Um, so I found some language, um, in one of the other cities, I think it may have been Peoria, um, and so this kind of comes from that. It's a replacement. So, one of the things that would be exempt is replacement of an evaporative cooler affixed to a one and two family dwelling where the replacement equipment is of equal or lesser airflow and is placed in the same location as existing evaporative cooler. And I think that's fairly standard around the valley. The other one then, the other section we'll add is a repair and replacement in kind, uh, which would, I think, mean equal or less CFM or amperage rating by a licensed contractor of an air conditioner, unit, furnace, heat pump, package unit, not over five tons of conditioning capacity. I hope I have that kind of described right. When located outdoors, replacement equipment shall be in the same location and equal to or less than the weight of what, that which is replaced. Repair or replacement of refrigeration systems located inside a building shall require permanent and compliance with all requirements of this code for classification of refrigerant utilized in new equipment. So, I think, and I did not, uh, put a restriction on this for residential, commercial. Hopefully, that does make sense. Um, the, probably the problem that would come up in commercial would be if the, and I don't know, uh, Councilman Schroeder, you may know, would five tons typically be over two thousand CFM or?
Right on. It is two thousand CFM.
Okay. So, in commercial, there may be an issue with, 'cause the, the code says that once you get to over two thousand CFM of capacity in a unit, you have to have a smoke detector on that unit. And that would be the only thing, I guess, that would be an issue. So.
Well, five ton is the largest residential unit they make. Anything over that is considered a commercial.
But I'm guessing some of our smaller tenant spaces may have five-ton package units or whatever, rooftop units, right?
Yeah, I would say unless they're three-phase systems.
Okay. So, so we added that. Did wanna point out that under the current code and proposed both, there is a section about emergency repairs. Um, so under seven-one-six C, we will have a statement that says, where equipment replacements and repairs requiring a permit must be performed in an emergency situation, the permit application shall be submitted within the next working business day. So, that's kind of typical everywhere. You know, we usually get calls and say, hey, I had to do this. Can I go ahead and get the permit? And we work with them and do that and then maybe do an inspection. So, um, but that has kind of always been and will be in the new code.
I got one question about two, two slides back. So, if I'm changing a split system, one on the ground, one in the attic, that's saying that I don't need a permit for the one on the ground, but I need one for the one in the attic?
Um, you're talking about this one here?
It's in the same location.
Located inside the building.
Yes.
So, what you're saying, so my house, I've got split systems. Um, one's outside and one's in my attic. So, and they go together. They're.
Right, right, right.
Can't change one without the other. So, this is telling me that if I change, I, I don't need a permit for the one outside, but I do need a permit for the one inside?
I'm open to what you might suggest.
Well, just the same, same difference as far as if you're not changing the, and structure and integrity of the housing.
Typically, on your, you, you, if you have a split system, typically, your outside unit's gonna go out first, right?
Yeah, but I, I can't change one without the other.
So, you do have to change the A coil, even if you change, okay. I, I, we can look at that. So, the concern would be, I think, not necessarily for normal, you know, split unit where you've got the A coil inside and your, you know, air handler and stuff like that. It would be if you used a smaller, like a, um, uh, I can't think of the term, but the, the system where they're pumping the refrigerant to a place in a room. And so, there are certain requirements depending on the refrigerant for the space that that refrigerant could dump into. So, we may wanna.
Well, it's like they're, they're sealed systems. So, they're both, they're both pieces of equipment are hosting freon, you know, it just, it runs through it. So, when you say dumping freon into a room.
I'm thinking of, so, um, the Samsung or Di, uh, Diakon makes them the, um, huh?
Mini split.
Mini splits. I don't know why I couldn't think of that. So, a mini split is, you know, instead of ducting and stuff, you actually run the coolant or the freon from an outdoor unit to a unit in a room. So, you could have that placed in a room that's too small for the capacity of the refrigerant that could leak into it. At least the code tries to address that.
No, no, that doesn't make any sense. So, basically, like a mini split is virtually just like a heat pump or an air conditioner. It has an A coil inside of it. It's just it has a blower motor that blows through one giant opening instead of through a series of ductwork. So, if, now, the difference would be, I guess, in a sense, is that, okay, it's not in an attic, it's sitting in a room, you know? So, if it were to leak, you know, let's just say, okay, so then if a hole got sprung, then you're, the vapors are going, pumping into the room. Now, you could argue that if the one in the attic, if it sprung a leak, the blower motor would push the vapors through every single room.
But it wouldn't hit the, it would have enough, 'cause what happens in, and just, I've had this come up on some reviews, um, primarily in commercial, but they had rooms that, you know, were a hundred square foot, but it was serving a system that was doing a whole office building. Well, that same refrigerant amount, twenty pounds or whatever, is, you know, could easily go into that one room and then it would exceed the level that would make it where you couldn't breathe.
So, if there was like a catastrophe with the freon.
Right, right. So, I, I, I'm, um, I, yeah, I, I understand your question. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to say just only a package unit on the roof is the only one exempt from a permit. That's kind of what you're asking about.
Well, I'm just seeing that, it, it was just the way it's written is saying if it's inside of the building and, I mean, like, for example, Robbins, you have one on your roof, um, but I have split. I have both.
Right.
So, it's, but they're virtually the same, it's the same thing, but one, but the mode, the blower separated, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's two separate. And so, in this case, it's just, the wording is telling me that regardless, I mean, I could be outside, uh, do the outside one and, and not require a permit, but do the inside one, I would, based on the wording.
If we, if we did, if, in that second line, repair or replacement of a refrigeration system, if we made that only applicable to commercial?
Well, I mean, no, but I understand if it's a residential system, if we gotta like cut some trusses, we gotta get someone in there to inspect, if we gotta, I mean, if we gotta change the way things are in the house because of, of old versus new equipment.
Right.
I, I totally understand it and I, and I totally agree with having it inspected. Now, but it's like, just like for like.
Components.
Like, generally, I'll walk up in the attic, there'll be two hanging straps, the unit sitting on it. I pull it off, I put the new one on, done. You know, that kind of.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem. I, I was kind of, this came from either Peoria or Tempe. And so, I was a little bit confused too about why they kind of differentiated the way they did. So, and I didn't know if it had, you know, related to commercial.
It could be related to commercial, 'cause I mean, they use the word building, you know, instead of home. I guess, I don't know if that makes a big difference. And also, if, if you're talking about a office building, I mean, there is, you have to take ceilings down. You have to do a lot of different things to an office building, 'cause they're not as accessible as in a residential home.
So, if we added, um, so either, either we need to specify that, that a split system in a residential's okay to not have a permit if it's under the five tons and?
Like for like, yeah.
Okay.
Unless you have to change the structure.
So, I just need to reword that to address that part.
Right. I mean, but I can, I understand commercial work, 'cause you do have to take down, like I just did to school. I had to take down a drop ceiling. I mean, that doesn't exactly make, it doesn't do anything to the structure of the building. It's just a drop ceiling, but still, we had to do something other than just put it up a hole, you know?
Okay. Well, no, I, yeah, I can work on that. But we're headed in the right direction.
Absolutely. I just don't wanna pull permits every day of the week, basically.
So, I did wanna flesh out, 'cause, you know, one of the other things is, you know, I hope to have a couple of innovative things in here. So, the bulk permit program, which I mentioned, um, that there's a provision in there that allows, um, the creation of that. So, the, the idea is that for residential trade permits, mechanical plumbing, electrical, you could get, do one application and it would cover however many jobs we would set as part of that package. And so, you, you would just, once you did the job, you would send us a text or an email and say, hey, add this address to this permit. And here's a picture, it's done. And so, we would kind of try to work out. So, we'd have, you know, it would be for licensed contractors who request to be in the program. Um, there would be some minimum requirements, you know, three to five years in business, maybe no complaints via the ROC, Current City Business License, you know, and if the inspectors dealt with them, kind of how they feel about, you know, they haven't had to, you know, get on to them about anything or that kind of thing. And then kind of also maybe allow pictures or video from the contractor to be submitted for the final inspection. So, that is the idea that I wanna flesh out, but I don't have time to build it right now. And then the other one is, uh, kind of taking something that they do in Phoenix quite a bit, and I believe Mesa, the permit by inspection. So, for a tenant finish out that really, you know, a lot of times, we have a cell company or cellphone retailer that's gonna go into a space and all they're adding is some cabinets or their counter for their sales and stuff. And so, you know, they might have a little bit of work on moving lights or something like that, wanted to have a, a program where they didn't have to turn in plans at the very beginning or if they weren't needed, the inspector could work that out with them. So, they would be tenant improvement, tenant finish out, um, limited area, uh, not to exceed five thousand square feet. So, kind of looking at simpler type commercial projects that we try to work with them, get them going on them a little quicker than a normal, you know, submit the, the plans and we review them and send them back for correction and that kind of thing.
How do we, how do we communicate that? I understand where you're going with that. I totally understand that, to simplify the process for especially the commercial, the business owners who are out there trying to save a little bit of money, um, on their renovation, not renovations, um, um, changing decor, uh, changing, like you said, cabinets and such like that. But how do we communicate to them the line as to what, what is acceptable and what is not acceptable? And how do we get to that point? Because they're, they're gonna come to, we're, we're, we're gonna get caught becau, because they're gonna say, well, we didn't realize that that was the line. And they're gonna go out and do their work and then they're gonna come to us and ask for forgiveness.
They, they do that already right now.
I know, I know. So, how do we?
It's not structural. Well, that's not one of the things. So, um.
So, I understand where we're trying to go here.
I, I think part of it is, you know, getting it out through, you know, both press releases and stuff. I think it's good that we would be modeling it similar to Mesa and Phoenix. The, a lot of the contractors we would be dealing with have already maybe gone through it over there. So, I don't think it'll take a huge amount, um, to get it, 'cause it will just kind of be saying, hey, we now offer the same thing Mesa does. So, but the, writing the rules and stuff and it, it, it doesn't seem to matter how much we, I mean, we did a thing with the Chamber of Commerce to talk about, okay, if you're doing a restaurant remodel or whatever, here's what you gotta do, and still ran into issues. So, um, you know, we'll try and definitely make it. I think, uh, it'll be a positive enough thing that it'll get its own kind of press, hopefully, um, you know, that we're doing that. So, but I definitely need to look closer at, you know, how the, what the parameters are and what we'll be able to. So, you know, right now, we could probably handle it. If we, all of a sudden, we got a big jump, we don't have the, the capacity, you know, manpower right now to, to do it on a real large level. So, but.
Never mind. Thank you.
So, um, so I'm missing, so basically, the inspector would meet with the people and come up with a plan. If they agreed to that plan, then they would, we'd process the permit. They'd get started. The inspector would go out, do the inspection. If drawings were necessary, we'd get those while they were kind of working on everything. So, just some steps to try to make it a little faster for turnaround and simpler for some of the simple projects. Probably wouldn't allow it with restaurants or any kind of cooking thing, 'cause you get into health, you know, the health department needs to look at it. Um, we also have to kind of work out with fire on anything they might have.
So, when you say that, that you're trying to simplify it for smaller projects, what do you, what do you mean by that? Where you're trying to simplify it for smaller projects? What is a smaller project?
Well, a, a tenant finish that's going into a space that maybe is three thousand square feet. So, like over here at Fry's, you have some of those, the nail salon going in. Could we have, you know, worked with them in a way that got them in a little quicker by working more through inspections than plans? So, right now, we try to get the plans and get those compliant, because then we have some, we've agreed, this is what needs to be done. We're not gonna change it on them and say, oh, well, we, we didn't tell you, you needed to do this. So, the idea is to get the plans correct and code compliant, and then we inspect to those plans. Well, there may be a process where we can kind of inspect based on the code and then work out the plans, the record, you know, through the process. So.
'Cause I can almost see where, where Jeff's question comes into play is where, where does, where's the line? Where is?
Well, so the state right now for, you know, when a architect is required or an engineer is required is based on square footage. Uh, one part of it's square footage, one part of it's the number of occupants. So, there, there will be some things like that. It's open to business occupancy, uh, mercantile occupancy and that kind of thing. So.
Wouldn't the example be like in that same mall, you had Subway go in and now it's gonna be, instead of Subway moves, right? So, now that could be another sandwich shop. That's kind of a change.
Did you know high blood sugar and diabetes symptoms have nothing to do with eating carbs or sugar recently?
Can that answer your question? So, but we also had the, uh, where the daycare went into the same strip center. So, now you have what used to be retail and now they're gonna be kids and they're gonna be taking naps. So, when you change the occupancy, you really can't use this program. So, when you're thinking of, the whole purpose of the code is life safety. So, if something is not gonna be a life safety issue, 'cause it's going from a Subway to a firehouse sub, excuse me, then there's, I think that's the type of program we're talking about. But if it's going from a sub shop to a daycare, then we probably need plans. It's, it's a total change in who the, what the tenant occupancy is gonna be. Okay, I've got a hypothetical for you.
Okay.
In a strip mall, just like Subway, wherever you want, you know, in that area or there's by Fry's, where right now to the east of Subway, there's an open.
Correct.
Um, suite. Just hypothetically, let's say Subway said, we wanna expand into the, one to the east of them, and all we have to do is put a door in there so that then we can have the customers come in there and then sit in there. Is the door gonna be needing permits and inspection and all that kind of stuff or can they just say, oh, wow, we just put a door in here and now we're gonna expand?
So, we went through that with, uh, space down here, down the street a ways. So, the, the prob, the problem with that scenario is there's implications, um, number of people exiting, stuff like that. So.
Totally understand that. I'm, I'm saying the, the tenant comes in and says, hey, I just was putting in a door.
But doesn't that change the structure?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I, I understand that.
You're saying, would it, would this be applicable or?
Yeah. Would, would that be a small project?
Just putting in a door.
It could be, I think the threshold in that one is going to be the number of occupants. So, so, so typically, a small, like your restaurant, I think is probably a B, you have less than 49 occupants, right? So, but as soon as you go over that 49, now your assembly, that's a change of occupancy, that kicks in a whole bunch of-
So that, but if, but if I didn't realize what that line was.
That's why we, that's why we went and did the presentation with the-
I'm just, I'm hypothetically throwing these out here, so if people are actually out there listening to us, and watching this on their podcast, or whatever they're doing, so that they'll maybe, before they do something, they'll think about it. I'm, I understand, I'm trying to throw out hypotheticals for people to realize what we're trying to get to here.
That, that may be something that we need to do, is more kind of maybe some Q and A type stuff where we try to answer that. Because there, there's so many scenarios, that's, you know, we put together a document, you know, about the, the whole when is an architect, and stuff, because it, it varies, you know, if it's a, an assembly occupancy, it's a lot less square footage than if it's a storage building or a factory, so.
And that scenario changes the square footage also, not only the structure, cutting the whole, you know, a door in the wall, or whatever.
Of the business, square footage of the business, yeah.
It changes the occupancy and the square footage, so you're-
Totally understand, I'm just, there's, there's, it's, that's what, the people, the people out there, the business owners are, I mean, I, we're all in business to make money and to save as much money as we can, and, and God help us if we try to.
Cut it clear.
Scan.
Oh, yeah, some of those words.
The best, I mean, we try to be a resource. My goal, you know, if, if somebody comes to me, I will give them as much information as I can. It's just, sometimes, it, it, it just always seems like we're at the other end. You know, we're trying to figure out a way forward after a lot of stuff's already been done wrong, or gotten a lot more complicated than maybe it needed to be at the beginning.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I've faced that in a lot of different places, so. One other policy we, that I have written and kind of wanted to get documented in the administrative codes is a policy about concealed construction. So it goes to your point, when we have the people that do this stuff without permits, what is a path forward to keep them from having to strip all the drywall off the walls and stuff? So I kind of came up with a policy to try to, you know, give some guidance to them and to us that, you know, okay, this is how we're going to, you know, handle that, so. The other one that I want to work on is inspection by video or photography. I know there's some jurisdictions in the state of Washington that are doing this, I've mentioned it in classes, I've been wanting to do it for a while. So, you know, with today's technology, video chat, FaceTime, stuff like that, there's a lot of possibilities for doing, you know, an inspection rather than having to drive 50 miles around, you know, luckily, we don't have the distance problem that some other places do. But the program would, you know, be by con- with contractors, it would require training, guidelines, stuff like that. But I also think there's some value-added possibilities for the homeowners and contractors, you know, with the recordings and stuff like that. We have a lot of people come and say, I want my, you know, a copy of my plans, I'm putting in new cable, I want to figure out what's in the walls. Well, this way, we might actually have pictures and video of what's in the walls as opposed to just a drawing. So that's another thing. So you, you got a handout, and that handout relates to a section that I hadn't been able to get to when we met last time, so I've been working on this. It's, uh, in regards to mobile manufactured home standard. So we kind of had this standard that said, if you had a 19, a pre HUD, or one built, a mobile home built before 1976, you were limited in where you could move those to and from. And so, we've kind of worked on that to try to improve kind of the lot, or the ages of the mobile homes and manufactured homes that we have on different lots. So, we've set a, and included in here, I think it's on, and Joel, I didn't put page numbers on this. I'm in trouble. Go to the second, page three. We're looking at doing a limit for age of manufactured homes to be set on individual lots. So this is our, you know, area out here in the Y, and then some a little bit above superstition. And so, these specific zonings are S7M, RS10M, RS20M, RS54M, that if somebody's wanting to put a unit there and it hasn't been developed, that we might limit the age to two years prior to the, the year they're getting a permit. So we wouldn't be getting 1980s models put on some of these lots, and next to somebody that's already spent, you know, half a million dollars on their house. The, now, we've kind of modeled this, the Bullhead City has this. One of their things was, they did have, if you remove an older model, that they would actually give you a few more years. So, you know, we bait, you know, trying to say anything newer than, you know, 20 years old is definitely better. So, if we can get rid of a 20-year-old, then we'll let you put an eight-year-old there. So, so that's something we put in there, hopefully you can read that and give us some feedback. Tried to also set some minimum requirements for things to go along with it, you know, a detached garage or a carport. I think we just, you know, called for a carport, to just kind of have a better package end up on some of the, these lots, you know. Clayton and CMH Homes have done a lot of houses around, you know, and sometimes, I think, the one right down here, the red one that's for sale, within the first two weeks of them moving in, we had stuff all over the yard, because they had no storage building. So that one kind of became a nice, we're right on our nice thoroughfare. So, looking to try to set some standards just to make those a little bit better. And I think some of it goes to that there are some specific rules as far as financing in, in that, age of manufactured homes, and certain requirements. And so we're trying to kind of match up with that. We have a lot of people that don't realize that, you know, if I have a 20-year-old home, I'm probably not going to be able to get a loan on it, regardless of what, you know, how it's connected to the ground and that kind of thing. We did also look, we, you know, we struggle with some of our older manufactured home parks on the west side, with, you know, some of the owners bringing in really badly, or, you know, in bad shape units that are from the 1980s, or, you know, 1990s and stuff that have been beat up, and they're putting them in and selling them on contract. So, and it just doesn't really seem to help those parks. So, we also looked at some minimum ages for those, and some requirements for those to be done in those parks.
And that would be where they're renting or leasing them to somebody leasing to buy, or?
Yeah, we have a lot of them get sold on con- because then that gets them out of the whole rental, or the landlord-tenant thing, because it's not a rent. It's, and one of the things we run into is a lot of people put money into these, they can't remove them from the park. They're buying this manufactured home, but they can't move it. And in a lot of cases, they're put 2,000 down, and they're kicked out in six months, and, you know, so we get a lot of calls about those. And, and a lot of them are bad shape, a lot of them have been remodeled in other places. So we're trying to limit those and just say, no, we're not going to let, you know, if you rebuilt it somewhere else, it's not coming here. It's not what we're looking to get, so. And then, basically, we're, you know, if there's a pre HUD, one, we don't allow it currently to come into the city, and we're really not even going to allow them to move them around in the city. They just kind of need to, they're past their useful life, they should go on. So, we have a lot of people trying to rebuild them, and there's really some, there's some state law about that, that we haven't been really focused on, that we want to, you know, hold them to. And then also, we addressed some of the things with park models and RVs. I don't know if any of you have had the, the fortune of finding a 30-year-old travel trailer with a 50-gallon water heater sitting out on the side of it, next to somebody else's house. So want to try to address those, that that can't happen or shouldn't happen. And then, so that, the rest of it's just kind of stuff. So we're hoping to have the draft resolutions on the specific codebooks at the May 21st meeting, with the completed administrative code. I don't, and other than the changes we talked about regarding what permits are required, and any feedback you have on this, I don't see anything else really changing in the administrative code. The building codes, I just need to get the amendments written that will be applicable. Some of it's based on state law and stuff like that, and get those written. And so hoping to have adoption either the 21st or June 4th. So, any questions? Oh, oh, yeah, you got the fence thing, alright.
So that's all good for now, and now we're going to talk about fences, and then I get tomatoes thrown at me. Do you have a question for Dave or something before we?
I don't have a question on that, and this is not, this is above your pay grade, Dave. But one of the things we're trying to do with that is to make everything easier for our citizens and business owners and such things like that. And I think we really need to take a look at how we service them through the hours that we are open, through the city, through either your department and every other department. I'm just throwing that out there, that I think it really does, it would benefit all of our citizens and everybody if we opened it up to more of a, more than just four days a week. That's just, I'm not asking for any responses or anything, I'm just saying that.
I, I will, you know, we, I think in the four years I've been here, I've done three Friday inspections. Just as a request.
I'm just saying that that's because we're not open on Fridays, and that would open up a whole lot of stuff. So I'm not asking for responses, I'm just making a statement.
Okay. So, I have a quick slideshow, I worked with Mike on this. It's in, oh, let me, should I do it?
Yep, go ahead.
Alright. Yes, there we go. Okay, so we talked a little bit about this last time, and I had some examples here. I worked with Mike Weaver, this is just kind of a quick overview. They are regulated, fences are regulated in the zoning code. That primarily relates to commercial residential property regarding materials, the location and the height of the fences. Right now, we require a permit and engineering for anything over six feet. So if it's 72 inches or less, we don't require a permit. So then I'm just asking this question, should it be, you know, is that still okay? That's your decision. Should it be under six feet? If it is, what, what's the amount? So anyway, following, we can come back to that, but why would we think about regulating these? I gave you an example last time, I have a picture this time, of where we're seeing a lot of fences put in the right-of-way. Again, maybe they're just small pony walls, they're, they're stockade fences, they're split rail fences, and then we have to deal with them later. And then, we have spent, if you know, we're one of the other council members who used to be on the council, we spent about a year and a half working with this person, trying to get a fence rectified. So, again, just throwing that out there. So here, Mike Weaver went out and had his crew put together, these are, they're located in a couple neighborhoods. 159 fence encroachments, so these are the concentration areas where they found, again, one neighbor does it, they see it, it's kind of like a monkey see, monkey do thing, I believe, in, in some of these areas.
The yellow areas are where there's fence?
Those are where there, those are, where Public Works has identified encroachments in public right-of-way for fences. Again, they could be where you have a fence between property lines, now the fence goes to the back of the curb. So it's not, it's, so it's perpendicular to the street. Other cases, again, it's parallel, they'll put them right behind the curb, I have some pictures of that. So those are areas where Mike has found that folks have built fences in the right-of-way.
So then, this, this isn't something, if we were to deal, start, you know, you always hear the grandfathered, well, I'm grandfathered in because it was done, blah, 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 you know, ahead before we changed the ordinance. So how would the grandfathering affect this?
So again, that's ultimately goes, you're asking about enforcement, how do we enforce it? So let's say, this is in the area perhaps more over here, where we're doing some curb and gutter sidewalk. We had put some streetlight installation, so now, we're working in a neighborhood, we essentially tell folks, you're going to have to move that, because we're putting new pavement, we're doing some drainage. Again, we may not be, I, I don't know that it'll be in anyone's lifetime here that we're going to put sidewalks in, in Royal Palm area. But if we ever would, you know, they would say, okay, you're going to have to move that, because we're going to be doing a project next year. And so we'd be asking people to move it. I think if it's in the right-of-way, again, that's maybe a Joel question, I think we have the ability to, you know, give you so much notice and say, contractor's coming through, and you can take it down and move it yourself, or the city will do it.
So then we already have a way to deal with it?
In some cases, we do, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not saying, I'm just letting you know, there's an issue today with 159 fence encroachments. So, the issue is, is it going to be 259, is it going to be 359? So, again, what we try to do, because there's no permit, we have very little way to educate people, that's my only point.
Well, there is a, we, they, there is a permit required over six foot.
Correct, over six foot.
Right.
But that's in the backyard, you're talking about-
In the front yard, it's only four feet, so when someone puts a six-foot fence in the front yard, we, the fence is usually up. Maybe it goes in on Friday when we're not here, we're not sure. But it goes in, so now we have a code enforcement case. I'm just pointing to the fact that we are having people put fences in the right-of-way. Sometimes, a lot of them you don't see on some of the major thoroughfares, but that, that is an issue.
I have a question, when it comes to the four-foot fences in the front yard, does that include no climb? No climb, that, like, the, the see-through no-climb fence, like if you put your poles every eight foot or whatever, would no-climb be considered a, a fence?
I don't know the term no-climb, I'm not sure with that.
Of course, animal fencing.
Wire, it's wire fencing.
It's got sections like this, open.
Yeah, and when I went back, there were certain prohibited materials in, in, in our fence code. So the way the fence is supposed to work is that it is a decorative fence, above four feet, has to be opaque, you got to be able to see through it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to point out, you can't get grandfather rights on an encroachment that's in the public right-of-way. So, even if it's been there 40, 50 years, they're encroaching, they're on city property, that's too bad, you can, the city can tell them to move it.
So then why mess with it?
It's pre-1978.
Then why, why change that?
No, I mean, if it's city, if it's city right-of-way, or it was county, and the city got it, it's, that's still public right-of-way, the, the city can tell them to move it.
So we already have a way to deal with it?
The point was that with this neighbor of Mr. Waldron, they pointed up and down the street, and they said, look at all these encroachments. You, I will get rid of mine when you tell those six people. So now, we're dealing with a negotiation point of, we're trying to cajole this person to put it back at the property line, but at the same time, they have a point, go make those other six. So then now, it's like, well, you can't just do those six, you got to do everybody in that neighborhood, and then, nobody wants to, it's just unraveling a ball of yarn.
If it's an encroachment issue, we have a way to deal with it, I just-
We currently do.
Yeah.
But the fact that we don't have a permit, this is another example, somebody's already poured the concrete, and now, we have, and then the next slide shows that the bricks already showed up, and that's kind of what we're dealing with. That is, the right-of-way is probably seven to nine feet behind the back of the curb. And so, yes, we do have a way to deal with it, and that's going to be, going to be difficult to get that person to basically undo all that.
So the, with the utility, not just an encroachment, but with the utility easements that are recorded on your deeds and that, they've actually also encroached on those easements, right, not just the right-of-way.
Yeah, they probably did not call Blue State, and then there usually is, you know, some, you know, could be a gas, could be a media com, or somebody that has a right to be in that area behind the curb. So again, a lot of these are the older subdivisions.
Larry's hope is that we're dealing with this before this shows up, rather than after the fact, there's a lot more-
Yeah, I'm not saying that we go out and write 159 letters, I'm not saying we do that today at all. I'm just saying, think about it, and maybe 2019's the wrong time to think about it. Maybe it's 2040 was when we think about it, but that's just kind of, here's a new one, that's an FPE. So that is an encroachment, now, is that bothering anybody? Not necessarily, because when you pull out or back out, you can see if there's a kid riding their bike down the street. But that is now built in, the city entitled, we have the right to widen the road someday. There is private utilities that have rights to put utilities in there. And then, is the person, why did they do it? Maybe they were also working on a drainage problem out there, but maybe there, somebody was parking there in front of their driveway, who knows? I'm just, that's another example of an FPE encroachment. This is the one that kind of sparked some of the additional discussion, this is right across from the school, where the- This is right across from the school, where the west side of the road is a federal patent easement. So this entire five acres, which is actually, I think it's the same owner, but they have, um, an acre and a, acre and a quarter, and then they have three and a half acres, or whatever it is over here. So they basically built this brick wall around the whole thing, and so, because it's under six feet, average, um, we essentially had to go out there and cajole them to put in the, uh, the weep holes. And so, you know, why do we care? Well, because when this, uh, when there's no weep holes here, basically, the water's gonna run down the street. Now, maybe it still affects them somewhere else, or this is a ditch that comes across the street here. It's gonna affect these people if they, now the water's gonna run down the street and affect the next. So now, we had to go out there without, without any tools, other than just saying, "Hey, you know, we need you to have weep holes there, but we can't force ya." The other part of it is, as I was mentioning before, where the fence, uh, and I can't turn this off, 'cause it's not, um, GIS layer, but this is a, a hundred-foot eventual right-of-way, is what we'd like to see on Idaho Road. Uh, so what the property owner did is they built the fence right at the thirty-three. So this, what you're seeing here is a thirty-three-foot FPE. So they're all within their rights to put in that fence right at their, the, if they put it at the property line, it would be in the middle of the pavement. So they, we know they're not gonna do that. So they put it at the back of the FPE, but having a permit would allow us to go have a conversation and say, "At some point, you know, would you mind putting it back another seventeen feet?" Having a permit is at least we could ask the question. So if, now we're doing a road project up there, and we do somehow acquire that seventeen feet of right-of-way, now we're moving, I wanna say that's a hundred and sixty-five times two, uh, three hundred and twenty feet of fencing that's gonna have to be moved at, I guess, our cost. Um, let's see, so there's a couple weep holes that were on Smoke Tree that, again, Sam from our office went and asked the folks to put in, after the fact. This is the infamous, or, or one of our many infamous ones. So, that's what we were dealing with for the last year and a half. It's basically taking pallets apart, putting in a fence, saying, "Okay, we're gonna paint those, we're gonna, we're gonna," it's not legitimate fencing material, but if you paint it, if you stain it, if you treat it, you can take pallets apart and make it into a fence. So then, it was a six-foot fence, and so, um, by painting it, treating it, this is the, the two-foot section that makes it opaque. But again, you see that, right behind the curb is where the, where the footings were poured, 'cause these actually were, were footing. So, uh, fast forward a year and a half, um, still haven't gotten a thank-you card yet, 'cause we gotta get these posts out of here, but now that is moved to the property line. So yes, we do have a tool that says, you can, you have to have a fence. So this person, we say, "You have to have a fence, it has to be at the property line." But, again, they go down the street and they say, "What about those other six enclosures? You're making me move my fence," after they did it. So again, maybe this is just food for thought, um, and you can decide what you wanna do.
People can say that with anything, though, their weeds, their, they can say, they can go try to tattle on their neighbors about anything. I mean, we could use that argument for anything, saying, "Well, the neighbors are just gonna go tattle on their neighbors if they're in trouble." I mean, yeah, they can.
Yeah, again, part of what we do, we don't seem to use "solve it" anymore, we are "solve it." Our city staff is "solve it," basically, when we have to go and mediate a dispute with the neighbor. So, um, this was a new fence that just went in, again, I think it went in over a weekend, it's a commercial property. Um, that does not meet any of our codes with regarding using galvanized. But again, without a permit, we can't even have a conversation with folks. So now, we're not sure if it's at the right setback, um, it's, if it's supposed to be, um, if it was setback twenty feet, it actually could be all six feet. So because it's owned commercial, if it's gonna be six feet, you gotta meet twenty-foot setback. If it's less than that, this, uh, at least apparently tries to meet the four-foot plus the two-foot, but it actually doesn't even comply. So yes, we have a tool, but this fence is done, and now we have to go and say, "You have to tear it all down, because it's not decorative, it doesn't meet the definition of decorative." But if we had a permit, even if it was no fee, at least we'd have the ability to have a conversation, and we're gonna save, yes, it'll be a hassle for people, but at least this'll, they're gonna have to rip all that out and put up a decorative fence.
So what specifically is that, what, what did they do on this one? They're, they're out into the easement, it's too tall, it's too short?
It does not meet the dec, it does, not the right materials. Um, we don't know, because we don't know exactly where the property line is. Like, we think it's probably okay if it was, it's supposed to be a pony wall, like a four-foot wall. So we have a, a screen wall requirement for a parking lot. So, they're gonna work on cars, they're gonna service cars. It's not a parking lot like we required a screen wall at Fry's, or a screen wall at Circle K. But, that's the, when you don't have an opportunity to talk to them at all, we don't know if they're just, if they're really creating a, a, a yard in front to keep cars that they're gonna be working on tomorrow, or the next day, or the next day. So it's not like it's a retail where you go in and out, that's would be a, a screen wall to hide headlights, to kinda hide the cars. This certainly doesn't meet the building material requirements. So, but it's probably at the setback, but normally, it would, it would be a three-for-four-foot wall at the setback. But it, we can go after them and say, "No, this is not gonna meet the decorative requirement, period, you gotta rip it all out."
That's a commercial property, not residential.
That's commerc, well, actually, there's a house in the back, it's owned commercial, but it's, uh, there was a house in the back, you can see, plus that building was, uh, uh, I think a tire shop.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's commercial or residential?
It's owned commercial.
Okay.
But actually, there is a house on it, too, so it's kinda both. It's owned commercial, but there was, so, I think that was it, so.
I think it's easier to solve a problem in the beginning than it is at the end. And I'm not saying a permit should be expensive or time-consuming. Even if it's a dollar, I don't care, to have it set correctly, 'cause most people don't know where their easements are for utilities or for roads. That's how we get so many buildings set in the easements, because they don't know where it is. If you wanna do something out front that affects everybody else, I, I see nothing wrong with asking for a permit.
I agree.
Okay, well, again, it's up to you, if you're, you're thinking that way, let us know. Um, is it anything over four feet, is it anything over six feet? Just leave it alone, that's kinda what, we're just throwing it out there. Did you have any questions for Dave on other parts of the administrative code, too?
Well, I was gonna tell, so I told Larry after we wanted to lower it, I said, "Well, the fee schedule's set, and it's at six feet." So it, you know, we can say that it's no fee, just because we just passed the new fee schedule, we don't wanna redo it.
Just so we know, it's in the right place.
Chip?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question in the aspect, I know you didn't cover it, but the aspect is on, and, and I've got another person that's come to me, um, concerning building of a shade, any aspect on it. If it's in the county, both Maricopa County and Pinell County, it's two hundred square foot. You also can go into, uh, Costco and buy one of these, I'll say, I don't know what to call them, it's, uh, it is a, well, it's not a pop-up. These are a structure that you can actually put up, that, um, was, uh, ten by fourteen, which is a hundred and forty square foot. Um, it's made of, uh, wood, and they have, uh, a aluminum roof on it. Um, but it comes with, and I looked at it, it comes with no engineer's drawing. So that means I'd have to go and get an engineer's drawing on this. And, the, you know, there's been a big push from a lot of people throughout the state, but also in our community, of, uh, having shades for horses. And, the statement that was made to one person that came in to, uh, talk about it was, number one, was if it's less than a hundred and twenty square foot, you don't need a permit, but if it's made out of metal, you're gonna have to come in with an engineer's drawing.
I don't think we...
Horses...
We've never told anybody that since I've been here. If it's a hundred and twenty, it doesn't need a permit, you could make it out of, uh, horse manure. It doesn't need a permit. So, nobody here in this building would ever say that.
There was someone that said it, to, to this person.
Well, I, I just don't, I think we have a hundred and twenty drilled into our head that under a hundred and twenty, you don't need a permit. Anything over that, no matter what it's built out of, then you, over, if it's a hundred and twenty-one, then you need a permit and you need...
But that's based not on our, that's what the code is, right? So what, I missed it, I was talking to Joel, what was the comment? Well...
The comment that city staff said, that if it was under a hundred and twenty feet, but it was made out of metal, they would have to get engineering. And I don't know, I don't think we, I don't know that we would've ever...
They were definitely told that.
No permit, so then we wouldn't require engineering. Maybe somebody said it, you know, I apologize if somebody thinks we said that, but I, I can't imagine that we would say that. This code was adopted in two thousand six. We've been operating under that parameter since two thousand six, that it's a hundred and twenty, it still has to meet setbacks. So, if, if it's three feet, if it's a hundred and twenty, you gotta be three feet off the yard, off the side, I think, three feet off the rear. So once it's over a hundred and twenty, then you gotta meet regular setbacks. But I guess going to your other question, the bigger question you're raising, I guess, is, what's wrong with a hundred and forty, or what's wrong with two hundred? And we're only talking horse shades here, are we talking all buildings, or just horse shades?
Well, where I'm concerned about is the horse shades.
Okay.
In, in the aspect on it.
Because Dave did, I have to be honest with you, Dave tried to talk me into a hundred and forty-four square feet, to raise it from one twenty to one forty-four. There are cities that say you don't need a permit for up to two hundred. I believe the city here had the debate in two thousand six, and the city here decided to keep it at one twenty. Now, if you wanna change it for RSGR, RS-54, for horse shades, because we wanna, you know, protect the, the horse community, I do know, when we were talking about solid waste earlier, we, this is really sad to say, but we have a lot of folks who live in sheds. So I'd hate to, if you wanna put a number on them, or some amount, um, but right now, we have no limit on the number of sheds you can have. So I would be cautious to say, "Let's go up to two hundred." Um, there are some communities that sounds like Dave has done all his research here, that are rolling it back from two hundred down to some amount, maybe it's one forty-four, or something like that.
The county, is it? The county is two hundred, correct?
Right.
The county is two hundred, but there are some cities that are, that municipalities, not the county, but municipalities that are also thinking of, or, or are rolling it back to, to the, I don't know if it's one twenty or one forty-four, or something like that, but they've experienced that, when you say you don't need a permit for up to two hundred, then you are getting some, uh, structures that probably could've used engineering, 'cause there are people are putting up stuff that might not hold up, and that's our concern. But I guess for horse shades, you know, that's for you to discuss, if you think there should be an exemption, or a new limit, or something like that.
Because, well, one of the concerns is, is, for example, is the aspect, if you make it out of wood, horses are a big termite, a huge termite. I say they got horse art, if you can put out wood out there. I don't use a hitching post made out of wood, because they made a beautiful design on it, and ate it in two.
Yeah.
Uh, and it didn't take 'em very long.
Like a four-legged big beaver, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so, I, I'm very concerned with the idea of, uh, you know, the, I'll say, the information that's gotten out, that it has to be, it cannot be made of metal without an engineer's drawing on it. An engineer's drawing is expensive, any aspect on it. And I, I would encourage the idea to basically increase the size, because, uh, you know, a, a ten-by-twelve shade, in theory, you say, "That's big enough for a horse." But on the aspect that, when that sun moves across the sky, sometimes that shade does not, is not usable at that later-on period of time.
Is there a way in, so I have a question, and this may be for Joel, is there a way for, in the code, to just, you know, I keep hearing horse shade versus, 'cause we do have a lot of different things that get built to focus in on a number that's bigger for horse shades, Vice Mayor, is that...
Well, yeah, there's a mayor motel in the aspect on it, which is gonna be more, it's gonna be more inclusive, it's gonna have, I'm gonna say, a lot more, I'll say, structure in, involved in, and it's gonna be a larger structure, which is gonna be over the two hundred square foot, well over two hundred.
Would those have electric and water, though?
No.
So it's not like they would have electric or water where somebody could live under it, or...
So...
No, they're open, anyway.
So you kind of understand where the whole engineering thing comes from. So, so the residential building code is basically a recipe book. But that recipe is based on four walls, wood studs every sixteen inches and that. So that, that's covered in the residential. When you get to a wood carport, that's no walls and just four poles, a steel building that has just four columns and a roof, it's not in the codebook. There's not anything that I can give anybody and say, "Well, you need to have this, this, and this, and then it's okay, and you can build it." That's why we require the engineering, because they're the people that can be the new chef and write a new recipe.
Over a hundred and twenty square feet, though.
Right, right. But, you know, something, the other thing is, though, it does say, even if you don't have a permit, it is supposed to be built in compliance with the codes. And so, but we, I've never told anybody, "Well, you don't have to have a permit, but you have to have engineering." That doesn't make any sense. I, I know, but, you, that doesn't make any, we try to be very sensible. So, the one thing that we may wanna look at, and, and if we get the new plan reviewer, we'll have, one of the things I wanna do is get some maybe pre-approved plans. We go to an engineer, we pay him to say, "Okay, here's a two-hundred-square-foot building, here's what it has to have." Now, we have a new recipe that we can say, "Okay, you don't have to get the engineer, we already did it, get your permit, this is what you build it to." So, so I, I have interest in doing that, we just haven't been in a position to do that. So, you know, we may do that for patio covers, carports, there's some things that we could, could do that for.
We did that for, trying to think of her name now, she bought a horse shade on Craigslist, put it up without a permit, and, um, we did, uh, we did a rezoning for her, because her lot was like, um, one point...
Yes.
Two acres, um, can't think of her name. But that, that was a problem, because it was over a hundred and twenty square feet, but there was engineering, the company that built it was out of business up in Colorado. She had to find a local company, it cost her three, four hundred dollars to get engineering, and then we approved it. But that was over a hundred and twenty square feet. Trying to think of the name of the, like, Kath, Kath, Kathy, Catherine, something. Any, I'm sorry. But anyway, yes, she had a problem, because she had two problems. She, she was told she could have horses, and she couldn't. And then she had this building that was, she got in her pickle, because it never had engineering. There was engineering, she just couldn't find the company that originally manufactured it twenty years ago.
Do we need to keep going tonight?
No.
Does anyone wanna talk about diabetes screening? So, okay.
No, you covered that for us.
We will be adjourned, then.